Reggie Reigbert, 390 Hennepin Street, Pittsburgh. Regarding ordinance 2018-16, which you guys just voted on. You did the responsible thing. That was the responsible thing, the decision that you made. Now, let's look at ordinance 2018-10A. The responsible thing for you to do tonight is to table this motion. The residents of this town, this is a very serious decision to allow this change to the redevelopment of this area in Pittsburgh, which is just as important as the Ingersoll Rand development, which many people probably never thought would happen. That took a long, long time, and now we're seeing some progress.
Mr. Reverend, you have to address us.
Yes, well, this is going to look over here.
Well, I appreciate that. You can address us.
Okay, but one not here and one either.
If you could do that, I'd be amazed.
I can't. You're right. So, the Ingersoll Rand, obviously, is a great success in Pittsburgh. This is finally coming to fruition. I just don't see the business, we don't want Pittsburgh to be called Garbage Town, New Jersey. Now, I'm not, I said at the last meeting, I make garbage. I have a good friend that just hired LMR to haul away junk. So, that's not the issue, it's just where's the best place for a facility like this? And we wonder, at some point, as Pittsburgh gets more, as Easton overflows, or the efforts that we're making of redeveloping the riverfront, that we have to look at that whole area of South Main Street. That includes the LMR section. And we already have enough trucks with Shimon, and we don't need more trucks. This is not the place for it. It's a proper business, it's a respectable business, but in the area that we're trying to develop is not the appropriate place. And the responsible thing for council to do is to not vote on this. The residents of this town deserve a complete analysis. This is an issue that has been, I think, since February, that the planning board was looking at this and thought it was a bad idea. I think the residents of this town deserve from the council the pros and the cons. What are the benefits of having this business of additional garbage trucks in Pittsburgh? And what are the negatives? And that, I don't think the residents of this town have received yet. So, I'm part of an ad hoc committee, we did collect some petition signatures, and I'll read very briefly what the petition said. "Pittsburgh Town Council is proposing to modify the Pittsburgh redevelopment plan to allow for waste hauling companies to establish operations on South Main Street. This would be contrary to the passing current plans that we are striving for in Pittsburgh to become a riverfront destination." So, the people said, we the undersigned, opposed this, the LMR facility on South Main Street. So, I'm going to give them two years. 177 adults, 176, 176 adults, 37 of these adults, all residents of the town, have lived in the end over Kent Towers. So, again, just to repeat myself, I think the responsible thing, you did the responsible thing on the armory decision just a few moments ago, and now I think the responsible thing, because we can't make that same mistake like we made with the asbestos in the mold in that building. It wasn't your mistake, it wasn't my mistake, but we have to see the future of Pittsburgh, which is the riverfront, and this just is not a fit. So, I would ask for an analysis that we table the vote, and the residents deserve a complete analysis of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reigbert.
Bill Timmons, 230 South Main Street. I also want to speak on 2018-10A. I think it'd be good for this town, it's going to be a revenue producer, you know, taxes, it is nowhere affecting anybody, you can't see it from South Main Street. There are good people who work with it. He's got five trucks going and out of that location a day, sometimes two or three times a day, but that's nothing compared to the trucks that go in and out of the foundry and park back on Howard Street and create hassles back there. Same with UPS, pizza delivery trucks, small merchants in town that are running around. He's trying to restrict people from driving through town. It's ridiculous.
Jim Daly, 326 Kennedy Street, Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Mr. Reigbert.
I just want to talk a little bit about 218-10A. Some 25 years ago, I lived, not even on Center Street, my father-in-law was very instrumental in changing the rules about going up and down Center Street hill there. I checked before I came because I want to make sure nothing has been torn down or changed. All the signs still remain. There's a weight limit going up that hill, coming down that hill, there's a sign. When you come on from Wilbur, there's a sign that sits up at the end of Roseberry Street, and there's also a sign at the bottom of Center Street before you go up the hill. There's a four-ton limit. I went up that hill the other day following one of them trucks with a police officer behind me. I want to know, have they been instructed that they're allowed to walk there now? The signs are still there, so it's all changed.
Not to my knowledge. I didn't know it was four tons, I thought it was five, according to our statute. But the signage statute.
No, look at the signs, the signs are clear. I thought it was three. So, I took the time before I came here today, and I think my wife took pictures of the signs. They're four tons, all three signs are there. And I'll tell you what, I live right on Center Street, I live right at the base and top of that hill, and if you think it's fun to hear them trucks go up there in the morning or at night, it's not. I don't think any one of yous would want that going by your house at 6:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the afternoon to try and relax. As a matter of fact, I know you don't. I know you don't. I got an idea for you. City Hall's not doing too well, it's got mold. Knock it down, let them move up there, and let them go out to the highway. Now, I'm smart enough to know that's not a very good idea, but it's not a very good idea to have. I pay taxes here, too, and I would like you to at least consider what's happening there, and at least let's enforce the laws. Right? Make them go out to the highway, don't let them come up Center Street hill. But I don't think it's a very good fit for where you're putting it, anyway. And I just wanted you to know that.
Too long, so I'm going to use my timer to set it. David Morset, 540 Heights, Pittsburgh, New Jersey. Speaking of an ordinance 2018-10A, the town of Pittsburgh has established clear goals for revitalization of the length of the riverfront that consist of a mix of uses, mixed use, contributing to the appeal of riverfront living, entertainment, and commerce. As such, the town adopted the reference Riverfront Development Plan in 2013 and identified District 6 as an area of Riverside commercial. The intention is to shift the focus away from industrial uses while providing a broader range of commercial and residential uses and options that may be more compatible with the Riverside theme. The proposal to store waste disposal containers and trucks in this district does not advance these goals and may detract from the appeal of developing residential and river-themed commercial uses in this area. I urge you to take those words into consideration when you vote on ordinance 2018-10A. We have been standing on the shoulders of future leaders in this town with the Riverfront Development Plan. Let's not disappoint them. Let's make them proud by making the right decision tonight and not amending the Riverfront Development Plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Morset.
Alan Eadie, 71th Street, Pittsburgh, New Jersey. This guy deserves a shout-out for running that business back there for a lot of reasons. One, it brings jobs to this town. People live here, he hires people from Pittsburgh area, they pay taxes here, they have children here, and everything else. 90% of the traffic that he has goes right out South Main Street to the highway. There's been no complaints of odor, the only odor complaint down there is from the sewage system. Just like there's no complaint, as I said a couple weeks ago, there's no complaint right here, our own garbage trucks are right here in the middle of town, no complaints from the project, no complaints from McDonald's, no complaints from Lincoln Street or Bate Street, or any, as far as you like to go. This guy has a legitimate business with, and he helps a lot of people in this town already. I would actually recommend in passing this. Thank you.
You're doing well, Mr. Reigbert. Lee Clark, 241 Henning Street, doing all night. So, I'm up here to speak about 2018-10A and my position on LMR. In its current form, I am still opposed to this ordinance or to this amendment, and I would ask council to vote it down. Now, the proposed location for this waste storage facility is in the wrong location. Currently, it's being proposed right now between Kent Towers and the Delaware River, in the middle of a residential area. This is not a prime location for something like this, I think we can all agree about that. It doesn't belong in that area. I'm not saying it doesn't belong in Pittsburgh, but it does not belong in that area, and that is a solid argument, something that we should all consider. Now, this goes against many things. This goes against the opinion of our town engineer, who has said that this violates many sections of our town ordinance. This goes against the recommendation of our planning board. This goes against the very residents of Alpha, who did not want it in their town last year. And now, we just found out tonight that this goes against over 160 residents who do not want it in this location. Over 160 signatures were collected tonight, and I think we cannot ignore them. So, I ask council, will you ignore those over 160 people tonight who have voiced their opinions and stated that they do not want LMR in that location? With a good conscience, can you vote yes on that? Because right now, I'm seeing no president to acknowledge, I'm sorry, to confirm or to approve this ordinance to allow this amendment into the redevelopment plan. Because right now, I've seen four noes, and people say, yes, they've seen trucks on these roads, yes, they've seen pollution in this town, but is that a confirmation? Is that something to essentially approve, that we should continue in that path? I don't think so. If anything says that we should be better to fix the corrections, or sorry, to fix those wrongs and correct them, and this is where we can start tonight. This is in a terrible location, and in good conscience, as a resident of this town, I cannot support this ordinance to allow a part of the redevelopment plan. This town has... Thanks, thank you, I appreciate that, council.
It's okay.
Council President.
Title doesn't matter.
All I'm saying is we have a real opportunity here, a redevelopment opportunity, to improve our town, to bring in new business, to bring in tourists, and even if we cannot see that waste facility, or facility area, because it's hidden behind the trees, that's no excuse because it's in a terrible location between our elderly, between our greatest natural resource, which is the Delaware River. We're asking that you simply move it, and then we can talk about the details after that, but this location is not the right location for our future, it's not the right location for the younger generation, including myself, who will be here long after that, many people here will not.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin.
I just wanted to come up, I think there's a little bit of misinformation. I keep hearing from certain people, this isn't a good place for a waste storage facility. I've rented dumpsters from LMR many of times. They drop them off in my driveway, I do the work that I'm going to do, they come, they pick them up, nice and clean, everything's in and out. I've never received a dumpster to my property, or one of the properties I was working on or anything, that had any garbage smell, had any residue of any garbage in it, had anything that I would complain. If I got a dumpster that had trashed stuff, the size of garbage smell, they'd be, I don't remember her name, like the receptionist, I'd be the first one calling her saying, pick this thing up and get rid of it. So, it's not, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, it is not a waste storage facility, it is a container storage facility. So, with that being said, the chances of smell coming out of it, I've rented in the past three years, if I had to just take a shot at garbage, 30, 35 dumpsters from LMR. Not one has ever smelled, not one has ever been dirty. So, if they're coming from whatever storage facility they're using now, which I believe is Alpha, what would make anybody think that the containers that would be at this property would change? Is it going to change its way of business? Does it have a new business plan to save money, clean them, and they're going to stink now? So, I just wanted to clear up that misconception. I don't think I'm wrong, am I correct? It's not a waste, it's just a container storage facility.
We're a trucking company that hauls garbage.
So, that takes all the concern about smell and dirt and filth out of the picture. I've also seen pictures of the property from prior, you know, as a teenager, I used to run around Pittsburgh, I know what it used to look like down there, and now I've seen pictures of what LMR has done to the property. If that's not the kind of companies and businesses we're looking for in this town, then what the hell are we looking for? Because it looks, I would, hell, I'd go down there and throw a football around, it looks spotless down there now. So, no smell, cleaner property, no environmental waste, what kind of business do we want? That sounds like it. The guy's hiring town people, keeping it clean, bettering the dirt, the soil, the trees around, keeping everything spotless, and he's a raider, which everybody knows in this town, we need, we need ratables, we need businesses paying taxes, takes the burden off of me and you and you and you and everybody else that pays their house taxes. So, that's it, pretty much.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Martin.
I need you to address for the record. I have a question, since I'm allotted three minutes, can I give my time of the end speech on my behalf?
Unfortunately, no. I'm sorry. He concerned, he'll come back though, at the end. This is a very nice night. Is there anyone else?
I wasn't going to say anything here, because I feel I'm kind of stuck on both sides. I'm all for redevelopment, I'm all for the river and access, but at the same time, I know Rob, I know LMR, I know some of the employees. As you know, I also have a home improvement business, so I deal with LMR quite often. And to reiterate, the dumpsters don't stay. If you actually think a resident, that you're doing a job for, it's a dumpster, come in there in the driveway, you're going to throw your garbage, stays, you've got to leave it there, it's not going to happen. LMR is a good company here, Rob's a good guy, he's got a bunch of good employees. My decision isn't whether, don't go down there, not go down there, that's why you guys got elected, that's your decision. But after some discussion and thinking, and I spoke with you, you know, my concerns, and at first, I'll bet, I was totally, totally against it. You know, going to a thing, and I'm thinking about the Ingersoll Rand property. We held on to a dream for 30-plus years. Every time somebody came, wanted to go to up the Ingersoll property, they weren't good enough. They weren't good enough. 30-plus years, they weren't good enough. That's how long it took us to get up. Talking about redeveloping, wherever we get deep, redeveloping the town, my thought is, we're going to start right at the bridge, we're going to work our way up. And if we're lucky enough, we move that fast up the river, because Pittsburgh's prospering, well, maybe LMR by that time will also prosper, say, you know something, we got to prove this piece of land as well. So, rather than Blackwall, Vogelmount, we could cross that bridge when we get to it. He's a reasonable guy, he's a nice guy, I think that if we get up that far, I think he'll work with us to make things right for the town, so that's why I stand on LMR.
State your name and address for the record.
Kenneth Johnston, 79th Street. This is my first time here, you guys. I just want to say that I believe that having LMR down there is a good thing. I'm on the outside of town, so it doesn't bother me, and I know a lot of people that live around there probably does. But you got to think that, as we mentioned, the ratables, the taxable revenue, the property tax that they're going to pay, the jobs that LMR provides, the truck drivers, the noon are good-paying jobs, and they have to have a CDL, which means that they're not going to be, they have to be drug tested. So, they have no need to go and get on drugs and things like that. So, you have a good quality person working for the company, living in town, and I just think it's a good deal overall. The fine gentleman over there said about planting a seed, poison, I use a seed. I don't know, I looked over the redevelopment project, I don't know that that's a good fit for Pittsburgh. I've lived here 12 years, my life is a lifetime resident, but to try and copy what Easton has done, I don't think is good. I think Pittsburgh should take all of their industrial roots and bring more industry into town. And from what I understand also, is the Howard Street area, years ago, was just an industrial area, or park, or whatever. So, having LMR right next to that, doesn't that already fit part of the master plan for the town? And if people are concerned about truck traffic from LMR, having back there on Howard Street a proposed 420-unit townhome project, that would more than, that would be a much larger impact on the roads than any of the trucks that LMR's running, the short distance between the trestle there and Route 22 on 18th. That's all I have to say.
Is there any other comment? They're seeing none, we can go ahead and close public comment on agenda items. We will now move forward to the ordinances for what is, will be our third and final reading, which would be ordinance number 2018-10A, an ordinance amending the code of the town of Pittsburgh by amending the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan, Section 3.9, entitled "District 6 Riverside Commercial to Prevent Storage of Waste Disposal Containers and Trucks in the Zone."
And councilwoman, it's also Section 3.2, definitions.
I apologize, it says Section 3.2 as well. They have motion.
Second.
Discussion, council.
Yeah, this weekend, I went down and I talked to the neighbors around the area, and they said, we never saw so many councilmen down here that before. The people downtown are totally for it, they don't seem what it's going to hamper or anything. And I also, it was funny, because I said to my wife, we went to Alpha Pizza Shop for lunch, and I said, I'm going to stop in and see how we cleaned it up. If you don't mind, I did at lunchtime, so we went in there. You have a chance, I mean, I don't want everybody to get down there and look, but the pictures that Mrs. Morset showed everybody was totally wrong. Those pictures were taken when our mayor was down there. They were taken when the mayor was down there, and if you seek compare those pictures that she had to the pictures that I saw myself, how everything is lined up, he has different colored garbage cans, they're all lined up, everything, it's immaculate down there, from when Rock...
White Rock.
White Rock was down there, with the chemical clean. I'm going to vote yes on this because I feel that he cleaned the place up, he did a nice job, and he promises he's going to fix the buildings up down there, where Carl's organ glass is and stuff like that, and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Council vice president.
Actually, Mr. Reigbert expressed a lot of what I would have talked about, so I can be brief. Thank you. Everybody else thanks you, because I tend to ramble. One of the chief reasons I was in favor of this, even when we adopted on the planning board the redevelopment plan that does include this as a use, which I will repeat that portion for the crowd, since there's a lot of misconceptions, that's not the case. I'll read the minutes from the planning board meeting where it was approved. I'm not going to deny somebody business to operate for 10 years for a dream that may never happen. It could be 20 years, and the redevelopment plan actually has a stipulation in it. If the town has a need and a use, the town will help the business relocate, put them in a more suitable place, and then we can do what we need to do. Secondly, so, planning board meeting, 4/26/18, Councilwoman Deidra Lomond, a couple sentences. As for the permanent use, she specifically asked, we are adding waste container use disposal to the redevelopment plan. It was responded, yes. She also asked about condemnation in eminent domain, and she voiced concerns about that. She was also concerned, the open space money will be used for the acquisition of land. Also in the meeting notes, residents spoke and asked, why are we adding waste container storage back into the plan? She was concerned because she thought there would be a smell from the garbage. Mayor Ellis stated that it will allow services such as this will reduce the municipal tax rate. He also said, LMR is taking a different direction, and we don't have to worry about that anymore. Mayor Ellis motioned to recommend the plan be planned to council, and Mr. Swicker seconded. The motion carried unanimously. So, I'm asking, I don't understand, we apparently aren't in favor of the redevelopment plan either, because it was specifically written into the redevelopment plan to allow this business to operate. That's all I have.
I have no further comments from the previous meeting. Thank you, councilman.
Councilman McBride.
I said this a few meetings ago, when you really want to see what a person's core value is, check their own backyard, see what it looks like. So, I did. Not only was I impressed with the organization, on who would even organize garbage cans, I was amazed, but how clean it was. And I went down there in these dress shoes, walked the streets, so with council, President Fulper, went directly across from the entrance and spoke to the two residents down there. One lived there 30 years, didn't know they were back there. On this day, it was 87 degrees, after the second, you know how we all had a rain last couple, last week? It was 87 degrees, and I checked the phone, it was 87% humidity as well, double 87s. Now, you want to talk about stink, well, that's going to stink real bad, mine don't smell a thing. Not only did we speak with the owner, met his family, got the backstory, very interesting for people to start raising questions on what they want and what they don't want, try to find out a little bit, very impressed with one of the residents tonight saying, changed his mind after some, after some research and stuff, and that's what you really got to do. I deal with research... I did a little research too, where I found out some things about what happened, how the Alpha resident was upset. Also found out a little backstory on the plans for that, for possible future plans for that property, if not purchased and bought up for business. So, and I just wanna add one, two more things. I was having dinner on the deck of a downtown establishment, I was at Soler, having a nice dinner, and a tractor-trailer came right up South Main. Now, not only just a tractor-trailer, a fifty-three footer, which most of the folks have, it's a one-on-two, and I'm not, look, this is not, chief, this is not anything unenforcement thing, I'm just saying, a tractor-trailer went up. Okay, so be it. A little part of me said, "This guy's taking a beating, and I got a fifty-three footer going up the street." And a part of me said was, "If that tractor-trailer's going somewhere where there's business in Peabody, and it's a proprietary deal, and we're gonna make some money, and the town's getting better, well, so be it." Fifty-three footer can go up South Main, do you got a little tiny passage there, it's not a problem. And off of that tractor-trailer information, I'll just leave you with this, that for six and a half years of my career, I was a commercial vehicle safety inspector, North American Safety Alliance. I didn't, I had to inspect tractor-trailers, eighty thousand pounds registered, twenty-five a year. So I always, I was proud of myself on doing a hundred. So with that being said, I did over six hundred and fifty tractor-trailer inspections. Now, what I've been doing, and we spoke about this, sir, I've been, whenever I saw an LMR truck, I would stop and say hi, and introduce myself, not as a councilman, just as Frank from Peabody, just thanking them. And maybe some of the drivers were here tonight that I stopped. But what I did was, I really quickly just eyeballed the truck. I checked the service lines, the connections, the clamps, the emergency lines, the brake linings, the taillights, the windshield, if there's any cracks in it, the DOT numbers on there, the lettering, to make sure that they're actually to DOT specifications, the tires, the ICC bar in the back, so if somebody would run it in the back of it, that they wouldn't go underneath it. Let me tell you something, this guy runs a solid business, those trucks are solid, and so is his drivers. I said, "Thank you, I'll see ya." They didn't know what I was doing, but I could eyeball the truck in two minutes, it's like riding a bike once you get on it. Not that I'm looking for a safety director job, because, we'll get into that later on about the accusations of what's going on during my open time, but I'll tell you this, I support this man, I support the business, I say he's a stakeholder, and if the vote goes true, good luck, sir.
So, it's been a tough week, and it's only Tuesday. See my name a lot on social media. It's pretty interesting. But I think there's a lot of misconceptions, and I, first, I'd like to say that I have a lot of respect for those who did come up to speak today, even in opposition. Mr. Regret. I gotta tell you, I spoke with Mr. Berger the other night, and I was for sure, and he was opposed, and to hear what he had said tonight, I mean, it proves anyone can change their mind. I don't think what people realize is, you know, I've seen the memes that trash is not our history nor our future. Little do they know that back there was a landfill that is now Delaware River Park, and I played football on it. So trash absolutely was our history. But if you're not from Fallsburg, you wouldn't know that, okay? I don't think people realize that LMR has been here operating in the same capacity since 2015, okay? And all the while paying rent to the town of Fallsburg. And we've been collecting that rent and cashing those checks with no questions asked. Sure, we have cited them, but we still continue to cash their checks. There's no increased truck traffic, they're operating the same. And I have to tell you, if you guys have not been down there, I mean, when I look at these pictures, because these are far different than what Mrs. Morissette brought to us, this is what it used to look like, okay? These are all actual pictures of what LMR used to look like, okay? And then they began working. And this is what it looks like today. That is an amazing transformation. I know properties that were bought in Fallsburg that don't look that good. And appear some of them even signed the petition. But what I would like to say, and I have to tell you, I am completely disheartened by a member of our planning board who doesn't seem to know what the word impartiality means, nor do I believe that he takes his position seriously. Nor do I believe, Mr. Collentrell, that you will get a fair and accurate application being judged by our land use board after I've seen the behavior that Mr. Morissette has taken part in.
Councilman.
No, please, just let me finish. Quite frankly, I saw the website, and he made a lot of improper allegations. So I'd like to continue, councilman.
I would ask you to refrain from naming names especially in A.
I understand, councilman, but he had no problem putting my name out there, saying that I was lining my pockets. It's okay, what he did say, councilman.
Regardless of what was said when we're here at the meeting.
I'll be the judge of what's in the place, okay?
Consider.
I have considered it. Joe, I've considered it for four days. The bottom line is, the man owns the property. He paid off a $479,000 EPA loan, a lien, and paid the back taxes in $117,000. My vote's yes. That's his property. And if this is our final reading, I will open it back up for public comment. I have to, I have to. It's gotta be back open to the public before we can close.
Make the motion to be closed.
There being none, motion to close. I'll second. Roll call, vote, Vicky.
Councilman Lutz.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Council vice president Dejralma.
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh.
Yes, and good luck, sir.
Council president Fulmer.
Yes. Ordinance number 2018-10A has successfully...
Oh, was that the motion to close?
The motion to close. I apologize. So now, oh, boy, I was rushing. Ordinance number 2018...
You had a motion to second on the, to adopt, so you just need to vote.
Yeah. Roll call, vote, Vicky.
Councilman Lutz.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
No.
Council vice president Dejralma.
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh.
Yes.
Council president Fulmer.
Yes. Let's try and maintain order. Ordinance number 2018-10A has successfully passed, which was an ordinance amending the town code of Fallsburg by amending the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan, Section 3.9, entitled District 6 Riverside Commercial to Permit Storage of Waste Disposal Containers and Trucks in the Zone, including 3.2.
One further question. Just my two cents, you're allowed to say the motion carries or pass.
I'm just gonna do that from this point forward.